Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 11th. I call the Marlboro Public School Committee meeting to order. I would like to remind everyone that we are live streamed and rebroadcast on WMCT TV. Having said that, we'll call the meeting to order and I'll start with the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone could rise.
I.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We'll start off with presentations. So the Marlboro High School Student Advisory Committee.
I don't have to speak for anybody today. They're all here.
You do create impressions.
Just a quick announcement. I'm Mary Ellen Klein. I am the student council advisor and by extension their advisor as well. I just wanted to take a quick moment to appreciate the efforts of the current SAC members who have served their peers well. Presenting thoughtful comments here, but also a little less publicly in the principal's leadership council with student council and even yesterday with Representative Greg War. Advocating for the student voice isn't always loud, but they are making a difference. I think we can all appreciate the void that Risha is going, that will be left as Risha moves on to her next steps. But I'm here as their advisor to announce next year's committee. So for the class of 2025, Patrick Havland, for the class of 2026, Hadley Hawes. Taylor Cronus will be continuing her role for the class of 2027. Jay Danyango was recently elected to represent the class of 2028 and Atul will be moving into the role as student representative. So thank you.
Good night, everyone. As I hope you know, my name is Taylor Stimson and I am one of the two freshman representatives from Alver High School. With the school year ending, I'd like to quickly reflect on something from the beginning of the year. At our first student leadership meeting, I brought up an issue that I'd been made aware of. Many of my classmates were struggling to adjust to high school. There was a heavier workload, we had homework reintroduced, and the environment was different. Since then, progress in planning for the upcoming freshmen to transition. The first of these strategies is advisory, a program led by Mrs. Fessenden. The purpose of advisory is to teach students vital skills to succeed. This includes managing time, setting priorities, communicating, regulating behavior, building relationships, et cetera. A new environment comes with new challenges and the skills taught in advisory will help this new class acclimate smoothly. The second strategy is link leaders. Link Crew is described as a freshman mentoring program that helps to transition from middle school to high school. Thirty-four link leaders mentor small groups of freshmen throughout the year using a nationally recognized curricula. One of these mentors is our very own sophomore representative, Atul. I was given the privilege to sit in on the training session led by Mr. Verdone and Mrs. Casey. Together, the teachers led a very comical and engaging training session for the new leaders. Opening it with an intense game of Simon Says to test their listening and reaction skills. They followed with some fun exercises to get the group comfortable and familiar with each other. These programs, in addition to the new and improved orientation day, thank you, Taylor, will better guide the new freshies through those tough couple of months. Overall, the staff at MHS has done a phenomenal job responding to feedback and setting things in motion to give this new class the best first year experience. Therefore, I'd like to say thank you to all of the mentors and staff leaders for these new programs. As a final wrap-up, I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Klein, my fellow committee members and members of the board. This has been such an amazing and insightful experience and I'm so lucky to have been given the opportunity to help my class and schoolmates get the most out of high school. If there are any questions, I'll take them now. Otherwise, good night.
Any questions?
How about just a thank you? You've really done a great job and it's been phenomenal to have you here to speak your mind and let us know things, which is really helpful to have that perspective. So thank you for your time and efforts and I would also say, Mrs. Klein, you sat down really quickly, but you've done a phenomenal job on really building each year and taking a lot of feedback and continuing to grow the program. And also a nod to Ms. Boden-Hendinger on helping to grow the program a lot to make it better and better each year. So, you know, thank you for all of that too. So, there you go. Thanks.
Can I just add one thing too? Sorry. Taylor, I just want to say thank you too. I also, I'm looking forward to seeing how the link crew like works over, like getting it done. I've heard a lot about it. So I'm excited to see it come to fruition. So thank you for getting that rolling. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Cronus and I am one of the freshman representatives on SAC. Tonight, I would like to talk to you about the bathrooms at MHS, specifically the ones on the first floor. In March, the conversation about the bathrooms was brought up by all members of the student leadership council. The student leadership council is a group of students that meet with Dr. Riley bimonthly to talk about things going on at MHS. The entire council was in agreement that the first floor bathrooms needed to be redone. After that meeting, Dr. Riley submitted a proposal to maintenance and we are hoping the bathrooms can get redone in the fall. Or by the fall. I have spoken to MHS students, teachers, and parents and they all think it's a good idea. Before I continue, just by a show of hands, I was wondering how many of you have maybe used the first floor bathrooms for a sporting event or anything? I just want to kind of give you guys an idea of what the bathrooms are like during the school day. In the morning, they start out clean thanks to our custodial staff, but as the day goes on, the toilets begin to leak toilet water the more that they are flushed throughout the day. And since the floor is concrete, it kind of creates an unpleasant smell. Also, the sinks in the first floor bathroom do not, they don't all really work. Only one or two of the sinks work and the rest of them have tiny streams of water and they don't turn off. The first floor is also a little more likely to run out of things like soap or paper towels because it's open in the morning before class and after school. Redoing the first floor bathrooms would be beneficial to not just students, but also staff, parents, and family members and the reputation of our school. As an athlete, going to away games, a weird thing we do is we usually judge the school based on the bathrooms because we don't get to see much of the, many of the earlier parts of the school. For example, we would say, ooh, this one has hot and cold water, or this one has a blow dryer. Seems silly and I agree, but it's kind of just what happens. Oftentimes, when schools come to visit us at our home games, they are not very impressed with our bathrooms and they talk about them to their coaches, families, friends, and we want people to talk about our school positively when they leave. When we proposed the idea of getting the bathrooms redone to Dr. Riley, we suggested that they be done similarly to the ones on the second floor that are newer. Getting the first floor bathrooms redone will provide a space for anyone who comes to MHS to have a clean, comfortable space to use the restroom. Thank you for your time and have a good rest of your evening if you have any questions.
I'm gonna support you wholeheartedly because it is like, kind of like your first impression. And the first floor bathrooms, those are the bathrooms when anyone that's coming in as a visitor and we actually host a lot of different events there. It would be wonderful to have an upgrade because it is your first impression. So, and I hear you about analyzing bathrooms in other places. Good going.
Thank you.
So do we know if that's on the docket?
It is.
It is?
Yeah, it's on the list of somewhere.
Oh, good.
So I'm pushing for it to get higher on the list of somewhere.
Got it.
Yeah, it's definitely on the list.
Awesome. Good work. Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
Hello, everyone. My name is Atul Madur and I'm excited to speak today about the reintroduction of the National STEM Honor Society at Marlboro High School. At Marlboro High School, we are proud to offer various chapters of the National STEM, of the National Honor Society, including the regular National Honor Society, the National Art Honor Society, Triumph, and the Business National Art Society. However, there has been a noticeable gap when it comes to recognizing and supporting our STEM students. This gap led our senior, arising senior class president, Angel Naime, to propose the idea of reintroducing the STEM Honor Society at Marlboro High School. This concept he remembered from past discussions. Inspired by his suggestion, me and my other STEM friends have felt excited to explore how we can really bring this back to Marlboro High School. The National STEM Honor Society is a prestigious organization dedicated to promoting excellence in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. In its mission to inspire and recognize students who have passion for these fields and provide them with opportunities to enhance their knowledge and skills. This society offers a platform for students who deeply engage in STEM subjects, fostering a love for innovation and discovery that can lead them to exciting career paths. To join NSHS, students must be enrolled in STEM classes and maintain a minimum of an eighty-five or a B. This criteria ensures that our members are not only passionate about STEM, but also excel academically in these challenging subjects. Invitations will be extended to those who meet these standards, welcoming into a group of like-minded peers dedicated to academics and growth in STEM. One of the most exciting aspects of NSHS is the range of service opportunities it offers. Here's some examples of what members can look forward to. Maintaining membership in NSHS requires students to actively engage in STEM-related activities, enrichment courses, and project-based learning. These hours can be earned through various approached activities such as participating in STEM fairs, field trips, competitions, math contests, and STEM-related clubs. Other activities include tutoring peers, coding, conducting experience, and attending lectures or films on STEM topics, and participating in STEM camps or internships. Enrichment hours can be accumulated throughout the year, including during vacation and summer months. Students who have not yet completed the required hours can join as a provisional member while they look forward to their full membership. So as we prepare to reintroduce NSHS, we are taking all the necessary steps to ensure a smooth launch. Ms. Y is in the process of securing approval and support from Principal Riley and we are confirming that all administrative requirements such as chapter dues are met. In conclusion, reintroduction of the STEM National Honor Society at MHS is fantastic opportunity for all our students. It provides a platform for them to explore, learn, and excel in STEM areas, preparing them for future success in these vital fields. Thank you all and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Questions?
Well, I want to say thank you to yourself and others who pursued this. Dr. Riley knows that this is a passion of mine to see this come back. So, and I'm sure you'll be contacting me about that stipend that you'll need for the advisor too.
Well, we can accelerate that process.
That's right. There we go. But no, I'm, congratulations and it's nice that we are able to provide that recognition again and the opportunities and I'm sure, I'm sure the middle school would also love to have some mentoring going on within there for some of your hours that you need for stuff. So, good for you. Congratulations.
Wait, I have a question. First of all, I think it's great that you're introducing this chapter, but did you say, you said that they need to maintain a minimum of a B in their science classes or does it arch over all their STEM classes?
Just the science classes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was unfortunately unable to attend the cord ceremony this year, but I watched it on YouTube. And one of the things that you mentioned, Dr. Riley, was that many other schools only have National Honor Society. So, I was kind of surprised to hear that, that we have, you know, all of the other honor societies. Yeah. So that's, you know, it's amazing. And so thanks for all your hard work to bring this one back. It's great.
Any else? Yes?
And just to be clear, you have a staff member who is interested in potentially being that. And just to be clear, you have a staff member who is interested in potentially being that? You have two? Okay. I just, I thought I heard you mention at least one right there. Okay. So, two are ready and willing to step up. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hello, I am Catalina Curtis, the representative for the junior class of 2025. So, as the years have passed by, we have seen an increase in the number of immigrant students who are bilingual. We are living in a world where people speak two or more languages. It is vital that we start this process early on when a student's learning capacity is at its best. Languages like Spanish and French are very beneficial as we are seeing more Hispanic people and French-speaking people in our city. Learning a new language benefits everybody. It opens new opportunities for students as more and more employees are looking for, employers are looking for bilingual staff. It opens the door to new communities and friendships. The teachers in the language department work hard to ensure that their students come out of high school with a newfound skill. It is important for both the students that already come to MHS speaking this language and the ones that are trying to find a new language to expand their learning opportunities. The ability to understand a different language not only allows students to join those communities, but to also better understand the roots of other languages. Students taking Latin come to have a better understanding of how language came to be in a world that is constantly changing and adapting. Learning new languages has become very essential. This is why the language program at MHS is so important. Opportunities made available to students fluent in more than one language are incredible. From more job openings to better wages, knowing or understanding various languages helps the future members of America adapt to the increasing adversity throughout the nation. It can be easy to overlook how crucial the language program is, so I wanted to take time to point out how students benefit from this opportunity. Not only do they benefit when it comes to job opportunities, it also aids in their college education. It shows how involved a student is in learning new things and expanding their knowledge and ability to connect with the world around them. I personally, as a student of MHS, have been taking French for the past three years, and there was some discussion about not having French four next year, which is something that was very disappointing for both me and my peers, since we were looking forward to this the entire school year. But I had a talk with Dr. Riley, very passionate talk, at one of the Student Leadership Council meetings about continuing French four and what our options could be. He did bring up that we could take an online version, VHS, of French four, or if students were interested, to take AP French. We ended up talking to Madame, our French teacher, and what's going to happen next year is that we're going to have French III and French IV running at the same time, which is still an amazing opportunity because my class personally is all very interested. We all love our teacher, and we were all very disappointed to hear that the program was getting cut short. So, I just wanted to bring, bring back how important this program really is for all our students and I, as well as all my peers that are even outside of the French department, Spanish, and the Latin. They're all very passionate about learning the new language. And other than French, which French is becoming much more involved in our community with a lot of immigrants coming, speaking French. And as I have seen in my personal classes, we've had French-speaking students come in and have questions with Madame, and she's a great source for them. And also, our Spanish students, that even students that are already fluent in Spanish, they continue to excel their Spanish abilities, and then they are able to take the vi-literacy exam. And I didn't take it because I completely forgot about it, but I will definitely be taking it next year, and I will be searching for help from the Spanish teachers to help me expand my vocabulary, to make sure I am prepared. So, I just wanted to point out all the opportunities that are offered for students who speak more than one language, and how much this can benefit all of the students. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
So, so perhaps there's a test for triliteracy? No, that's great. Thank you.
I, if I can just say, I have to, I love that you wanted to speak about world language and the value of it. That's something that, for years, that's been something near and dear to my heart. It was tough when we had to make adaptations at the middle school, but we had to refocus, and it was really looking at the data that was happening across our district and how we could support our students at that point in time. I think I could speak for the committee, though, that we very much appreciate the need of having world language available and how it really is truly a benefit to all of the students. So, I think it's a matter of making sure that, instructionally, we're meeting the needs of the students as best as possible to meet some of those basic core subject matter. And hopefully, once we can do some rebuild, where I think we definitely took a hit, like many, many different districts during the pandemic, we could then rebuild that core of having world language back at, you know, lower levels and more challenging levels as well. But thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, just one other thing. I just want to say that thank you for advocating for yourself and your peers and bringing it to Dr. Riley because unless he knows that there's a problem, he can't fix it. And I think the solution is something we have all talked about, that we'd love to see more differentiated instruction in places where it can possibly work. And this is a perfect example. So, thank you for doing that. And good luck next year.
Thank you. I believe that concludes the presentations. So, moving on to superintendent's report?
Yeah, I was extended, so I'm going to try again. Have a good summer.
If we don't see you, have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it still is. I'm trying to duplicate and...
You get to talk about high school graduation first.
Yes, but can you see if you can duplicate?
So, do you have to go to display settings?
No, huh? To project?
Isn't it just here?
No, project. Duplicate. It's not keeping. Once again, Marlboro High School graduation was a wonderful event. Dr. Riley and his team, Marlboro DPW, facilities, and countless volunteers make this event possible. Thank you to everyone that makes this day so special first, their students, our students and their families. Marlboro High School graduates, students that are ready for college or careers. We created multiple opportunities for students to graduate from Marlboro High School with college credits, thank you, that will be available when our graduates attend higher education. The 2024 Marlboro High School graduates have shared the following post-graduation plans. Forty-eight percent of our students will be attending a four-year college. Thirteen percent will be attending a two-year college. Six percent are planning on attending technical school. Three percent are joining the military. And thirty percent are going into either employment or gap years or have other plans. Attached to my report, I have also included the list of four-year colleges our Marlboro High School graduates plan to attend. Dr. Riley and I were talking about this because generally, when we do our live stream of our graduation, we have included the graduation plans for each student. There was some discussion about the look or including it, but we both feel strongly it's a tradition, so we will be continuing that in the future. But we didn't want to lose everyone knowing the wonderful array of colleges that our students were planning on attending. I didn't know if anyone wanted to mention anything about the list that I included.
I appreciate it. I'm always looking for it, and back when graduation was in the fieldhouse, it was all displayed there, so you could kind of see it. You can watch, so on the, on the live stream, it wasn't on this year?
It was not, yes.
Okay. I didn't watch the live stream.
It was changed, and there needed to be more discussion around why it was changed with, this is Verfey and I, so we addressed that. And we said, from both of our perspectives, it's a tradition that needs to stand, and it shouldn't be over.
Yeah.
So, was it over set this year?
No. So, I think there's a difference between the look and the style and the professionalism of our live stream and the video production, which looks very clean, and it's very professional, and it wonderfully captures the event, but also providing the information and maintaining traditions that we have. So, we'll work together with the team to make sure that we try to meet everyone's goals.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's something as simple as their senior picture with their awards and their next plans in its own little video.
Can I ask a quick question on that? One of the things, though, I thought, and sorry that, you know, well, you may want to, I don't know. But on, don't, isn't there like the, like faculty awards or senior, that senior night faculty awards? I'm not calling it probably the right titling of that night, where that's an evening as well, where each student has that opportunity of kind of highlighting what they're, you know, what they've done, what they've achieved, whatever, as well as then plans, correct, that night?
Yeah, we did. Yep, absolutely, we did. That wasn't the entire senior class, though.
Right.
That's just the ones getting faculty awards.
Yeah. That's what I watched on the YouTube.
Yes, it was. We did announce the college on that night as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I mean, there are, there are other opportunities as well, so they can.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we want to celebrate our students, and it's been a tradition for us to include college plans in that live stream. The, I think the issue of the logistics was looking at how other schools are live streaming and how they're kind of making it flow as students cross the stage so that there's no backup with names and other students being on stage. So, I think some decisions were made, but we decided, and we talked about it, that it was important for it to be there. And so, better communication in the future around, if we're going to change things, we just need to have a conversation because we both have some pretty strong feelings about the traditions that we've embedded, even if it's different from other school districts.
Yeah. Yeah. We're embracing the fact that we know that in Marlboro, we do things that are a little bit different at times and special, but those are our traditions. And just like all of our surrounding communities have their own traditions as well.
Yeah.
So, aside from attaching the specific school and, and plans for the, for each student, which is the tradition, for me, I love seeing the list of the schools, even if I don't know who's going there. It's just to see the breadth and the depth of the opportunities that our students are, are moving on to.
And it's important to capture the, when you see the program of studies come to life, and you know that our graduates can go to Cornell, they can go to Duke, they can go to Worcester State University, they can go to UMass. All of those options are available to them because of the academic trajectory we offer them. So, it is important to display that.
Yep.
The only other thing that I would say that I think was interesting is like when you brought in La Grace about techtronics and those kind of decisions, I think are really something that's really good to highlight as well because I think just when we look at our, our data, it's evident that we have a population that is going into higher education, but that we do have plenty of students that are continuing for employment and other things and military. So, it is good to be able to highlight some of those wonderful attributes as well because those are some of the programs that you've developed, whether it's working with Patriot Ambulance and, and those kind of different relationships that I'd want to make sure that we're also highlighting those incredible things, too.
A hundred percent because those students are lumped into employment or other.
Yes.
And that's thirty percent, and that's a wide range. Some are very highly skilled now, kids that are coming out of our programs into good-paying jobs in the workforce. Others may be flipping burgers. We don't, I don't know. But, but there's a lot of opportunities that kids are coming out of our school district with. So, the more we can highlight that, the better.
We have also been doing a lot of talk about the students preparing for their future. And almost all of our graduates, many of our graduates are leaving Marlboro High with those credits. And we have to, if they're choosing to go and work at a business that is giving them course reimbursement, that is an additional pathway towards graduating from, with a college degree without a massive student loan debt.
Absolutely.
So, that's success for us.
Absolutely. It's great.
They're making informed decisions.
Yeah.
That's the most important thing we can do.
And we're giving them a lot of opportunity to be able to make those decisions that are the right things for them and that are, you know, positive on all levels. So, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all of the principals are here and waiting patiently as we wanted to spend some time talking about the Marlboro Public Schools of School and District Improvement Plans. I think it was one of the reasons that this week's packet got, was challenging to go through everyone's email and be posted online. But I think we solved some of those problems. And so, just a reminder that the District Improvement Plan and all school improvement plans have been updated for the 2024, 2025 school year. The school and district improvement plans all include the following goals. They all have academic achievement and curriculum and instruction as goal number one. They also all include district and school climate goals, safety and discipline goals, parent and community support goals, as goal, as well as the district improvement plan and Marlboro High School, I believe, includes separate professional development goals. Most of the school improvement plans just refer to professional development as over, the overarching goals of the whole district. Just a reminder that each school or district goal includes action steps, the person's responsible, any resources or funding needed, the timeline for completion, how it will be, each action will be evaluated, assessed, are the sources of evidence. And then, if the action step is completed. We wanted to really highlight and talk today about the development of the new academic achievement, curriculum, and instruction goal that you will find in all of the school improvement plans and the district improvement plan. The district leadership team introduced a process to create a common definition of strong instructional practices during this school year. This process included a clear continuum of expected practices and immediate feedback to educators. People in the audience have not received the emails that I think the members of the committee have seen throughout the year. But we started by focusing on what we expected to see in the continuum at the beginning of the lesson. We moved on to the middle of the lesson, and then we're ending with the end of the lesson. We are using a range from least effective to most effective strategies that we would like to see. And all educators were given immediate feedback. This is not an evaluation process. This is all about us coming up with a common expectation of strong instructional practices pre-K through 12 in the Marlboro Public Schools. The K through eight principals attended the K's conference in April 2024. Unfortunately, Ms. Reagan and Dr. Riley were not invited because it is a Title I conference, so they had to be included after this point. And the conference was focused on rapid change and systematic school improvement. The team focused on our goal number one, our academic goal. And in the school and district improvement plans, the goal was revised and updated to communicate the specific actions that will result in increased student achievement across the district. The team collaborated with other school leaders on communication strategies to share that vision. A plan to create a roadmap was developed. So, our next step was the creation of the roadmap. There will be one roadmap that represents the shared vision of strong instructional practices in our schools. The roadmap outlines the path to stronger tier-one instruction. The roadmap is a timeline and a The roadmap is a timeline and includes the action steps we will need to complete that goal. And the roadmap will serve as a visual reminder to all educators of our goal and our commitment to increasing student achievement. We want to make sure that everyone understands that we are speaking with one voice, with one vision, moving forward. And that updated goal that you see in everyone's school improvement plan, Dr. Riley had to add some extra because he does have knee asks still, so. But we all have increased teacher capacity for stronger Tier One instruction, which includes incorporating the six identified district EL strategies, when resulting in at least 60% of our students in each grade level, K through 10, meeting or exceeding their projected growth targets as measured by the 2025 Spring NWEA, or NWEA assessments in both math and reading. We also want to mention the fact that in the district improvement plan, for the first time, I am also included. I have embedded the four standalone Student Opportunity Act goals. We want to get to the point, and I have said my summer project is trying to merge our strategic plan into one comprehensive plan, so that people don't see it as different actions, but as one vision, one strategy that we're all working on. And those four goals are 1.1, and these goals are directly from the menu we had to identify, and stakeholders all had voices in this. Implement a multi-tiered system of supports that helps all students progress both academically and in their social, emotional, behavioral development. You'll notice we're using the, more of the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. Use the MTSS process to implement academic supports and interventions that provide all students, particularly students with disabilities and multilingual learners, equitable access to deeper learning. Develop a coherent and holistic range of programming that is responsive to the needs and interest of diverse learners. And then to promote students' physical and mental health and wellness in welcoming, affirming, and safe places. So our next steps, the leadership team has scheduled meetings throughout the summer to finalize the roadmap, create resources, and one communication plan across this district for the fall. The planning team has expanded, as noted before, to pre-K through 12. The roadmap will first be introduced at the Leadership Retreat in August. School committee members are all invited. We hope that you join us for that original first launch. School leaders will return to a fall school committee meeting to update the committee on completed action steps at that point. And that is as far as we are going to share tonight, unless there are further questions for either myself or any of the leaders that are sitting in the audience. All hoping to answer the exact same questions with the exact same answers.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Got to get down. I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start. And I guess we'll go in order of the plans by school. So Ms. Reagan, I guess you're, you're up first because we go by that. Mine are just a couple of questions. I mean, I love reading through these things to understand what's going on and everything. So new assessment tool, DACY III, can you elaborate on that?
Yep, so for our special education evaluation tools, we have been sort of using, since my start here, six years ago, we had one assessment tool, we switched to another assessment tool, and every year we kind of were always missing a piece. There was always, we needed a little bit more for EL, for language, or a little bit more for motor. So we worked with a cohort of staff here to go through options, and we all kind of agreed that the DACY, while in speaking with other districts, also isn't the end-all, be-all. It does give us a better view of what we want from students when they're coming from early intervention or when they're coming from the community and requesting a special education evaluation. So we were able to get funds from the Special Education Department to buy new kits, and we're also going to have a full training for all staff in the fall by one of the creators of the DACY, actually.
Cool. Thank you. School Day. Can we talk about what exactly the hours are for the kids and the staff? And just, I'm just trying to get a better grasp of.
So for staff, for teachers, paras, behavior techs, it's anywhere from about eight till about 2:30, 3 o'clock, depending on their contract. For students, we have different grades here. I don't know if everybody's aware. It's all preschool, but we like to separate them by age to really focus on what that age needs. So PK three means you're three years from kindergarten, PK two, PK one. For PK three, it's two and a half days, rather, two days, two and a half hours. Really just getting them in, getting them used to getting away from mom and dad, or grandma, or daycare, coming to school, following directions, really kind of simple, basic. And then PK two, it's four and a half days. We have AM and PM sessions. That's when we really start to work more on routines, friendships, socializing, getting ready to go to PK one, where we have five full days. And that's where we really start to work on the baseline or sort of the foundation of what students will be doing in kindergarten. So we use very similar curriculum that the elementary school uses, but we just bring it down to our level for our students. We incorporate more language, more visuals, more sort of hands-on activities. And then when they go to kindergarten, they already sort of have that expectation and they have that background knowledge. So when they start to really learn and put those things into practice, they have that background already.
Great. Thank you.
Trying to see if there's anything else I got on there.
Anybody else have any questions for?
Yes.
So sticking, so we'll stick with you, Sue, you guys don't have to get back and forth. So a quick question is, if I'm understanding correctly, there really isn't a school council set up for ECC?
So we don't have a, no, so we don't have a school council yet. We do have a home and school, which is what I sort of filtered my plan through for this year. But moving forward next year, we'll continue to use that home and school or be able to branch out to additional parents and see if they want to then make our own student, parent council.
Okay, that was one thing, which I didn't think it was like a have-to.
There's not a requirement.
Which, which I understand, I guess, the part of, you know, when we're talking, as we're progressing through the district and as we're aging up, it's just interesting that I would love to try and engage the parents early on on their first exposure in the district, so that we can get that parent engagement. Because if we kind of bring them in then and want them to partner with us, the hope be that it was, is going to roll forward. So that was one of the things I just had picked up and wanted to see how you were trying to get that engagement to help you, you know.
Yeah, our home and school has been really good, and this year, all of our night events have been getting a little bit bigger and a little bit bigger. I know Christian came to one. So as we're getting more involvement from parents, I would be more comfortable than to ask. It's hard when we have little kids at home and people can't always go to those night events, but even if we can do a Zoom meeting or something, but it is sort of a, back to where in our plan.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you.
I do have one more thing, and this applies, actually, I saw it in everybody's, I believe it was in almost everybody's, was 5.6, extend the offer to families and community to help enhance the appearance of our building, both inside and out. I mean, yes, we have brick buildings. We don't have, you know. I still want orange paint back at the high school, but that's a whole nother story. Yeah, prune, prune plum, yeah. It was cheap that week. Is it something that's been discussed amongst staff or is it?
Yeah, and I've spoken with maintenance about it, too. When this was deck, there was a nice big deck sign right on the front, but now there's nothing on the front of the building. We do have ECC signs.
On the corner, right.
Yeah, on the corner, but there's nothing on the main door. I like to call our front ornamental grass. And I asked if we could maybe replace that with some bushes or some perennials. But just, and there's some stuff on the side of the building. Now, if anybody ever comes by, there's an old sign that's kind of falling down. So just really putting everything back to where it should be, making it look pretty and nice on the outside.
Making it look like an early childhood center.
Exactly, yeah. We are working on getting the playground better. We have our handicap swing now. We have a communication board now, thank you. So just trying to just make it more child-friendly, family-friendly. So when parents come and families come, they can see that we're putting effort not into their students, but also into our building and how we look and how they look and how everybody feels.
Great.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything else? Next one is, I guess, going in order with Good Now Brothers?
Sure.
Questions?
Do you have anything for Good Now, Catherine?
So Amy, hi, you're up.
We're just, we're just going.
We're going in alphabetical order, yeah.
In order. It's easier. That's how it is in the plan.
Order of the package.
The order of the packet.
Yeah, which is alphabetical.
Love, representing G.
So I guess another question relative towards your school council is, do you feel like there's a way that you're going to be able to extend on trying to get some more parents involved? Because I mean, you've got such an active PTO that it would be wonderful to get some more parents helping from a council standpoint.
Agree, and I usually start with the PTO every year and starting to elect people for the school council. And I did start with a bigger team this year, but I really only listed people who consistently came to all the meetings. So I didn't feel like it was fair to list people who expressed an interest, but then couldn't really come because life got in the way. So it will be a goal, again, next year, to go back to PTO so that we can have a 50-50 split.
If you serve food, you get more people. It worked for Mary for a ton of years.
Promise to be like brief and efficient and those kinds of things, so I'll go with food. If I take a little longer, but we're good. So yes, I do. That is a goal.
And it's, I was gonna say, I'm gonna just say it out loud. I think everybody, I think, needs to get more parent participation. I mean, Mary was, I'm sitting in this seat because of school council and, and my involvement. And I will fully admit, I was not a PTO mom, but I wanted to have some type of help and effect on the community of the school. And I think Mary did a very good job back then and still did, all the time she was principal, was always explaining what the purpose was. And I know, I'm sure you guys all do it, but it's, it's a very important role in your community. And I look at Dan's, unfortunately, while I love the people that are there, we have people, and actually at Richer, too, we have people who, children have graduated forever and they've now become community members, and it's fine, but it's, they're not the ones that are there every day and understanding what's going on. So I would hope that more and more people will come forward to be part of their community, so, just for all of you.
And I'll just, I'll just add that I think having community members on this, because I know how valuable it's been at the high school. And back, you know, a million years ago, when my kids were in school, when community members were in, involved, that helped set up, you know, as you're identifying needs or gaps and stuff, sometimes community members can help figure out how to bring that into, you know, the mix. So not to put more work on any of your plates, but, you know, bringing back that kind of community, community input into school councils, I think, is, would be great.
Yeah, for me, I don't know if it's additional work, it just might be different. I usually go through my PTO to solicit membership, and maybe there's another way to kind of get the word out in a broader sense or to a broader audience of people that will just kind of, yep, there's a lot of explaining about what you're going to be asked to do. It sounds so big, but it's not hard, you know, it's enjoyable. So I think that's something we could just work a little differently on. I know PTO has to help select when there's multiple people interested, but I think we could probably work on getting the word out in multiple ways.
Just, just a suggestion is, I know all of the civic organizations, you know, Road or Reliance, all of those have educational committees. And sometimes those people that do that might be a good bridge to partnering, you know, with the different schools. Might not be that hard if you just sent out one general letter to them and, and see if anybody in those groups. I don't know. Just a thought.
Any other questions for Good Now?
So I guess I would say it's probably more of a question across all of the elementaries so that Amy doesn't have to take it on her own necessarily. But I just was interested, like around the six district EL strategies. And it's like observations and walkthroughs as a source of evidence. I guess my question is, is that, you know, Lynn and her group, they were very definite about their hopes and expectations. And I guess I'm interested in understanding, like, is your, do you have a check back with Lynn to try and understand how, how things are being met within each of the elementaries so that there are, you know, conversations between you all about how things can either be adapted or revised or supported better to hit those targets? I'm trying, you know, I'm just interested in understanding.
Can I jump in on that one? Because I think that we talked about, I talked a little bit about the continuum.
Right.
Right? And so at the beginning of the lesson, we've, we've been talking about for years, learning targets and success criteria. We're talking about language objectives and at the highest level, differentiating.
Right.
Language objectives. We're talking about academic discourse, what students are doing in the middle of the lesson, because that is one of the things that is one of the strategies. Teacher talk is one of the strategies as well. So we are looking for how much are the students speaking and how much the teacher, how much is teacher talk? So I think everything we're doing is framed around looking for those strategies and other instructional strategies, but also to give immediate feedback on it. And so then, as the leadership team, we are collecting the data. We are looking at it. We're looking to see where the strengths are, how it's been changing, how it's been getting stronger, and then giving the feedback back to the staff.
Okay, that's just, I'm trying to look at how that then weaves back in with what Lynn was giving as targets early on and how it's happening. Okay.
Well, and I think that's the official, like, that's the official work that's documented and we're measuring it. But I think the lived work is also, you can just feel the shift in instruction. You can hear the teachers talking about those strategies as a given. It's not just something to kind of add on or be intentional about at the end of a conversation. It's sort of living in everything we're doing. I feel really proud right now because we're doing interviews for new teachers, and we have questions targeting specifically that. And the teachers on the committee know what the, what a good, strong answer is and what we're looking for in a teacher that's prepared for that. So I think that those are the places we see it in addition to the things that we do officially.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's, that's great to hear that you guys are using that, so thank you. That's fantastic.
Anything else for Good Now? Jarik, stuff right up.
Thank you.
It's no dunk tank, but, you know.
Wow.
I'm sorry.
You so well on that.
It's your favorite. I know.
It is my favorite. Any questions for Jarik?
What is JJ's Den?
What is JJ's Den? So it is a, it's a space for students to go to regulate, to take breaks in. So students who are identified that need that time, they go in. There's, it's a sensory space as well. So we have, well, one of the things is in my office currently because I need to stitch it up. But we have, you know, like sensory items where they can envelope themselves and feel the pressure and, and release some of that dysregulation that they're experiencing. We have these paint tiles that are different colors, and they can either walk on them, move around them. There's like tactile things in there, so that was introduced this year. It has been a successful transition. You know, we removed something and gave a more proactive alternative, so, yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Next time you're in, I'll take you to JJ's Den.
So I, following up on that is, I'm going to ask Calming Corners. So I, following up on that is, I'm gonna ask calming corners in grades two and three.
So this year, I think part of the, when we removed our timeout spaces.
Exactly.
It was to give the teachers in K1 tools and materials where the students could go again when they feel the anxiety, when they need a moment. So, you know, there's the beanbags, the fidgets, anything that they have. There are rules that go along with the calming corners. I think, you know, it would be good to have them K through five, but just thinking about costs and, and how to get them through the classroom. So over the next three years, so K1, two last, K1 last year, two, three this year, four, five next year. And depending on the students and the grade level, you just change it up a little bit. So.
Anything else for Jarwick?
I did have one other thing. I love the restorative practices, families handbook idea, which I saw it in some, you know, in some of the other groups, but I really, I love that idea.
Yeah, this year we had a one page, just a very quick synopsis of what it is, why we do it, translated. That was shared with parents. But I think as we become more and more accustomed to using the restorative practices, we need the parents to know the language that we're using. When we talk about nonviolent language, when we're talking about harm circles, anything that we're, we're talking about, it's good if they know. And just to pair that with maybe an evening or PTO meeting where we explain what this is, why we do it.
Yeah. It also made me think that this would be a wonderful element to make sure that it is part of our website so that it had an immediate parent, you know, tie-in, you know, for people that come in kind of late. At least it's something that's readily available. But I love seeing that.
We do have like, I think all the schools shared it as well. So we had the leaflet flyer. I'm happy to share that with you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on.
Ms. Calliope.
Ms. Calliope.
Kane. Questions for Kane?
So it's not just Calliope. It is for some others, but Calliope's there so she can take a crack at this one. Why not? So I was happy to see that it was developing a progressive discipline plan to ensure consistency. And I think that is something that was, you know, spoken about throughout. I think that that's something that is good to see that we would have the consistency across the district. So everyone kind of knows this is what's gonna happen. And I guess my question is, is how is that gonna be pushed out to make sure that we really are across the elementary schools all aligned? And then obviously moving forward, how we're gonna roll that up?
It's, it's funny because Calliope and Mrs. House and I were members of a joint teacher safety committee earlier, talking about, one of the things is the consistent rollout of the rules across the district. We started that work last year because we wanted to do the hot reset on PBIS, which continues. We did another workshop this year where it's on the agenda for August as well. But just making sure, because realizing the disruption of COVID did disrupt the common expectations of reintroducing these are our core values, right? And just some of the extra lessons, Ms. Panazopoulos led a lot of the lessons. So do you want to share some of those things that you did?
So we've done quite a bit of aligning our PBIS work, rebooting it and going forward. And one of the things that we started working on from last summer during our summer work that we were doing was talking about ways that consequence, like kind of developing a consequence continuum that we can give to staff for easy access as to how to address certain behaviors as they arise. And we want to be able to take that one step further by aligning it completely district-wide from the pre-K all the way up. So that's one of the conversations that we've been having. And if you look at our conduct referrals and the way that they're coded in Aspen and just kind of coming up with a uniform consensus on how, where everything comes into play and how the different parts. So it's like, like why we call certain things and how about, like, for example, like a fight, how would we code it in there so that it's the same, a fight at the elementary level, what it would look like as, and then kind of moving it up. Obviously, it's, would be age-appropriate depending on the level. But that's some of the work that we want to continue doing this summer so that it's fully aligned and ready to go.
Thank you.
That's terrific.
Welcome. That's great.
Any other questions? No?
Kirby's, Kirby's corner is similar to JJ's den.
We have Kirby's corner and Kirby's loft. Loft obviously is upstairs and the corner is downstairs. And yes, it is similar to JJ's den that is in place over at Jarwick. It's just a place for students to come down, decompress, regulate themselves if they need space, an additional quiet spot to do some work because there's too much going on in their head or around them. It gives them a chance to kind of regu, get themselves regulated and be able to join their class.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to Richer School. Any questions for Richer?
So I'm gonna give a kudos. I loved seeing how many parents are involved and the community members and, and a lot of meetings. So, good. That's awesome. So it was nice to see on that.
Any questions for Richer?
No.
One of the things that I guess I was trying to look across a lot of the different elementaries is that it seemed like there were some pockets where we had maybe math growth was looking really, really good and other areas, maybe reading was a little bit, you know, weaker, let's say, or, or vice versa. And it, and it kind of depended. And I guess my question is not specifically just for you, but understanding how are we sharing across then the elementaries, what are things that have been effective and what are things that we need to do some adaptation on to maybe revise? I mean, as we're talking about our instruction, we want to have higher quality level. I'm just curious about how we're seeing because overall, I would say if I looked at your, the growth data at Richer was pretty consistent and larger growth opportunities that you were observing. And I guess that that's something where for me, I was like, okay, well, that, that seems pretty great that you're seeing it. How do we then put that into implication in other areas? You know, I just, how is that being shared across the district?
Do you want to share some of the teacher visits that have happened this year?
Yeah, so I, within our own school, some of the things that we've been doing was, you know, we're constantly tapping into our reading teacher and our math interventionist to go over data and practices and things that are working. We try to have vertical conversations about what we're seeing and how, you know, if an MCAS, it's fractions, let's say, you know, where it's a struggle, what does that look like in the standards all the way back to kindergarten? And we try to make that a focus. We talk about it a lot at the lead teacher meetings. The instructional rounds that we've done with Mr. Sanborn have been very beneficial in making sure that my admin team is calibrated on what we're looking for also as we're going in. And then what we've done there is we've provided many opportunities for teachers to have peer observations. So, you know, anytime they ask for that, whether I might guide them to do a peer observation or asking that my own grade level teams, you know, what do you think your strengths are, to get them to a point where they're trusting each other one enough to get into the classrooms and conduct peer observations on either seeing a stronger teacher or having a stronger teacher come in and give them feedback where it's very clear that it's not evaluative. Nothing has to get reported back to me. This is just have your conversations. The principal colleagues here have been very open to having their staff come and observe us. We've sent them to observe them. So I, I really appreciate the openness that we have with one another where we're willing to say, hey, I have a teacher struggling. Who out there has somebody that's strong that I can send my teachers to? And we started that even last year, sending some teachers to another school to observe math. And that's been very helpful.
I love that. Thank you. Because that was one of the things I was seeing, you know, again, throughout in different pockets. And I love the idea of the peer-to-peer because I think that's helpful also because in some ways you then easily offer up that, that opportunity for a mentor that's not necessarily, you know, through the program as much as you find someone that you feel comfortable having conversations with so that when someone hits a struggle, they feel comfortable enough to say, hey, I'm having a hard time here. Can you give me some strategies? And you create a relationship because I think it's just like any of us. There's gonna be an asset that you can offer me and hopefully I have an asset I can offer you. And then we work together. And then you're like, okay. So then you find that relationship. So I love seeing that you guys are doing that. That's great. Thank you.
Yes.
This question's actually more towards Mary, RJ, and Jody. In looking at the NWEA data for, especially for the elementaries, have we looked across the district at where it's not, there isn't a consistency that, you know, like you can't just say third grade in every building is X. It's, there, there are ebbs and flows. And are, how, how are you administratively looking at this and ways to recognize those?
So one of my goals were to have those discussions with the principals. We have had those, especially across the elementaries. When the window closed for NUEA, we sat down and we looked at individual buildings. And then many of us looked across the whole district to see, they're always comparing themselves to each other. It's, and they have the ability to do that. And then the discussions the last couple of days have been focused on, like, what do you think's going on? Why are these grades so much, like, making so much growth, but these grades, or this one particular grade is lagging? And then the conversation across the district, and I'll say it out loud, is that we set 60% growth because we need to exceed expected growth to address those gaps that were developed. And so therefore, we're doing much better this year. And we talked, I think it was Principal McCowan said, is 16 too low? Like, should we raise it? And we said, well, let's give it a year or two. But then still academic achievement, the grade level expectation, still, we have to exceed the 60% in order to get closer to at least, you know, more than one years of academic growth a year. So it's something we're all united on. It's our sense of urgency. So we're having those conversations in so many different environments these days.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Richer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
We'll go with Marlboro High. No, kidding.
No.
Any questions for Whitcomb?
Or Mrs. House?
I, I'd just like to say, I, I like your, how your background got into goal number two. Creating a team to review artwork across the school to reflect our student body.
So you brought up the goal that you saw like five point something in the other one vote, including. So there are some spaces around the building that really need to start reflecting our student body. And I think that black and orange are great and they are, you know, Marlboro and blue, but there are other colors that represent our students right now. So I have a team that'll be working on that.
And you have a lot of places around the building.
Especially like that big brick wall when you walk, like, right up to the front entrance, there's a large brick wall. And I would love to see us, like, really tackle that with a thoughtful project.
Yeah. And you utilize like all the, I don't know, trophy cases, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, down in the art, by the art wing and-
Yep. Part of that goal is gonna be like taking back the bulletin boards in the main two hallways and keeping them as like stationary painted spaces that represent our current student body.
Any other questions?
Wait, 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 wait.
I guess a quick question was, you would put about the date of completion, about the panorama, survey results biannually. Are you thinking you guys are gonna then try and more actively pursue bringing in more input so that we're making sure that everyone has kind of a buy-in on things? I don't know. I mean, I love, I, I think it's helpful to have that, but I do think it's changing. But.
I was gonna say, so I, I put in like each goal and opportunity for stakeholder feedback because I think it's larger than just staff or students. So we have the BAC that runs. And so those meetings happen monthly, which is an advisory committee from the MEA. But then we also have like our stakeholder group of parents and through school council and then our teacher leader groups. So tackling those stakeholder groups more frequently for the feedback so that we can implement rapid change a little easier than survey.
I didn't see it as a goal, and I'm not sure if it actually fits within this, but I think it fits into school climate and into discipline, which are the yonder pouches and the, the removal of the cell phones in the building.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And, and the shift that's occurred because of it. I think it's a very important thing that we need to recognize.
Yeah. It definitely could have been a spot, I would say, in school climate, in my opinion, because it has changed the school climate. We're gonna be continuing with the yonder pouches. As you know, our students currently like keep them, they bring them back and forth from school. It reduces, you know, there's been a lot of loss and, and breakage. So we're thinking of a system so that sustainability is like at the forefront of it because it's not a, it's not a, it's not a little, it's not a little bill. So we're gonna, we have that like in our minds. So this can be sustainable for us because we don't want to lose it. We don't want to lose the momentum. So we have a plan. I've been meeting with some different people over the course of the week. We'll be collecting yonder pouches at the end of the school year and repurposing them for next year and coming up with a plan where they're giving them off the bus so that we're not dealing with losses or breakage and then collecting them at the end of the day and trying to streamline that process because the money is, is a factor. It's a huge, huge piece.
And I just wanted to say, I like the idea of the implementation of the school meeting to highlight the success of the grade level monthly. Because I think it's almost like any, you know, sorry, anyone likes to have a success, right? Like in front of people. So I, I thought that's great.
Yeah, there's a big push for a sense of belonging. So school meeting will be by grade level. And so we'll have all, you know, almost 400 kids every six weeks come into the auditorium and, and lead, have school council members and student council members lead the school meeting, which will be exciting.
Anything else? Good?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All righty. Marlboro High. Give you all a second to look for your questions.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. So align special education, teacher support with grades nine and 10, small learning communities.
Yep.
Fill me in.
Yeah. So what we're doing next year is each team, each small learning community throughout the school is gonna have a special educator that's kind of directly connected with the team. And so the caseload of students that that special educator supports will be obviously with that team as well. They'll be part of the co-teaching model for that team. And then they'll provide those students with- team. And then they'll provide those students with academic support during the school day. So there's going to be a lot of consistency for students across our six teams, the non-EL teams.
Do you have any, sorry, do you have any anticipation that that may move into, like, almost like a form of looping, if you will, so that those relationships, because I, from what I've understood, from a special education standpoint, it, the consistency of having sometimes those similar teachers often has great impact of if you continue it on up. So I guess my question is, do you envision that might continue, where those people might have those relationships on with those students?
I agree with you. I was, I was a looped teacher, being the first lead teacher for the academy program at Marlborough High School. And I looped with students between grades nine and 10. I think the discussions that we have with the staff about looping revolve around the, number one, the instructional piece of learning the content. And it is, it is a lot to learn two new curricula over the course of two years. There's some benefits to having teachers that become consistently good at teaching a curriculum before they then move on to a new curriculum. So we have had a lot of sort of stagnant with, I'm an Algebra I teacher, you're a geometry teacher, I'm handing my students off to you from freshman to sophomore year. We have, for the first time though, this year, started to mix things up a little bit, where we do have some teachers that are going into, like, a 10th grade team, and maybe they've been with a 9th grade team. It's not necessarily looping, but it is exploring the same concepts that would be required for looping, which is going from one curriculum to the next. So I'm with you on the looping. I think it is, there's a lot of benefit to it. There's a discussion with staff about what they feel comfortable with. And I think the students have benefited from the relationships that they're generating over the course of that year. But two years would be nice as well. So, so yes, we are having conversations about it.
And I give you a lot more room, because I'm not an educator. I just throw out a word, and it's not necessarily the right word. So, thank you.
No, no, absolutely.
Can you explain what a win block is, or what I need?
Yeah, sure.
All these new things.
We've had a very dedicated team of folks that have volunteered a lot of time to reevaluate the way that we spread out the needs that we have as a school between intervention, which intervention block, or accessing teachers for makeup work, or going to get extra help, that's going to be coined as win or what I need. And so those are placed throughout the calendar for next year strategically. And so there's like a win block before the end of every marking period, for obvious reasons. And in addition to that, they're also expanding out what's called the CORE. And don't ask me what they've done with that acronym, because I don't know off the top of my head, but it does work. And so CORE is kind of related to what we have for needs from an advisory standpoint. So when we talk about social emotional learning, and we talk about anti-bias, anti-racism lessons, we talk about executive functioning lessons, those will take place during the CORE block, as well as what we call, and the state calls, MYCAP, or My Career in Academic Planning, which, especially for upperclassmen, would be their college and career planning. So all that's kind of built into that CORE block, which is also placed throughout the calendar. And then third, we have our traditional Panther block, which is going to be converted to our monthly meeting time for classes and link crew leaders, as you heard Taylor talking about link crew earlier. So those, those will take place during our typical Panther block that's happening now. We're just trying to give it a more intentional purpose throughout the school year and the calendar. Does that answer your question?
No, that does. It does perfectly. Thank you.
So then the next was, I love seeing, MHS will improve an advanced learning experience for students identified as honors level in mixed heterogeneous classrooms.
So we're, we're working through some professional development right now, excuse me, too, because I'm getting killed by the pollen these last two weeks, working through some professional development experience with the staff right now, where we have the heterogeneous setting, but we want to do a better job, number one, of identifying honor students and defining what it means to be an honor student. So we took that step this spring, when we started doing scheduling between the 8th grade and the 9th grade for both those rising cohorts. And then second to that, we've been providing teachers with time, essentially this week, too, they've been meeting in teams throughout most of the school day, to develop what those advanced lessons look like for an honor student, so that in a heterogeneous setting, where they're all getting exposed to the same CORE instruction, which is, really, that's where the equity exists. Preparation for those MCAS exams and what scope and sequence they experience together is super critical. But in addition to that, we need to be able to challenge our more advanced learners, so that if a lesson gets completed on what's part of that sort of standard CORE, and you have a student that's more advanced, and finishes it early, goes through it quickly, already understands it, there needs to be a more challenging opportunity for that student to make sure that they're getting the most out of that content experience.
So extending, that's more or less our differentiated instruction that we've been talking about, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
For a while.
Yeah.
So I guess, because I was seeing that that was date of completion, June 2025. And I guess that that's why I was like, but we've been kind of doing this from an implementation of differentiated instruction throughout anyway. So...
I think the June 2025 date, what that means for us
Right.
is that we will have a full year of adapting to that need of our more advanced learners continuously. So we're not flying and building it at the same time, but there's an actual developed plan for those advanced learners and their opportunities that they're getting throughout the entire school year, and seeing that come to completion throughout an entire school year in June of 2025.
Okay. Gotcha.
Not waiting until then, though, to answer your question.
Well, that's, I guess, kind of what I'm, is that we kind of need to be doing that anyway. So...
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can you talk about the review and evaluate of the health and wellness curriculum in ninth and 10th?
So as we look at what is the sort of current need of students, and what it is that they need to be learning in that health and wellness component of their studies, I feel that it's important that we evaluate what we're offering against, what is current and what is relevant. And as the standards get sort of developed and released, sometimes they quickly become, I don't want to say obsolete, but they become outdated. You know, keeping pace with new concerns that have risen with this generation of students. Social media concerns have evolved greatly from what was primarily focused on cyberbullying, and now that's taken on a whole new form for students and what they experience on a day-to-day basis with, let's say, social media addiction. That's an important topic to be addressing. Mental health is an important topic to constantly be looking at, how we're delivering it, and what we're delivering it, and what we're delivering on it. Vaping, right, and what is happening in the community with these opportunities to access things. So we just, we really want to stay current for our students. I think it's important that we sit down and we look at what we're using for resources, and what they're getting for information, and making sure that that's the most up-to-date opportunity that they should have.
I appreciate that. That's good.
Sure.
And then, since the middle school has been so successful
With the cellphone.
With the cellphone. Lack of cell phones.
Yes.
I know, I know it's a hot topic.
Oh, yeah.
I know it's, and it's not, obviously, a, an easy change, but we have an opportunity, obviously, since we have students who have already become accustomed to not having the phone in their hand all day long.
Oh, yeah. And it's, it's a great separation for them. And again, we talk about social media or cellphone addiction, right? It's a real thing with this generation. So we've, we've done a lot of research around yonder pouches for the secondary level. As Ms. House already pointed out, it's very expensive. And one thing that the high school doesn't necessarily benefit directly from that, the other schools do have access to, is Title I funding. And Title I is one of the more common funding mechanisms for yonder pouches, because they, it is very, very expensive. And so what we've been looking at as a high school with that expense, sort of maybe preparing for that in the future, is how we can adapt our current expectations to being more stringent in terms of trying to separate students from their phones for longer periods of time, perhaps in preparation for going towards yonder, or perhaps in a collaborative conversation with students around, hey, we are preparing to financially invest in yonder if we need to on your behalf. But part of this is also because of what we're trying to help you avoid. So if you're working with your teachers and your administrators, and able to separate yourself, let's say, for bell-to-bell, the entire class period, without issues. And so other schools that have financially not been able to put yonder in place, or a system like that, they've used bell-to-bell cellphone, sort of like, removal, where cell phones are out of sight, out of mind. And they have the sleeves in the rooms where the cell phones have to go in at the start of the class. They can't come out until the bell rings for the class. And I think creating that type of separation from a student and their device is super critical. And I think a lot of our students are very, very well behaved when it comes to our expectations with cell phones. I don't think, and Risha can probably speak to this from her experience this year, but there aren't a lot of debates in a classroom between a teacher and a student about cellphone use, or, you know, inappropriate behavior when it comes to cellphone use. So that seems to have been pretty quelled with our current expectations. The problem is that the addiction still continues. So it's, it's, I might not be, I might not have it out on my desk, and I might not be arguing with my teacher about it, but as soon as I raise my hand to go to the bathroom, I take my device, and I'm on it all the way to the restroom. I'm out in the hallway for an extra three minutes while I'm on my device, and then I'm going back into class, and I've just missed six or seven minutes of the lesson. So I think addressing that first, in preparation financially for maybe investing in yonder in the future, because we do need some time to come up with a solution for that investment.
Yeah. And I know, I mean, I know it's not the first attempt at trying to do this. I think, I think where, where it might have been unsuccessful in the past was the inconsistency. And so, you know, I know one of my first concerns when the middle school was talking about it, I was like, are teachers doing it too? Because they're the ones setting the example. So if the teacher still has the phone in their hand, that's, that makes it very difficult to say to the student, sorry, you can't, you know. But, but if we set the expectation consistently, I think we have a better chance of success.
And part of it, too, has been a very collaborative conversation with staff, too, who, from a generation standpoint, don't totally understand and grasp the issue. You know, our, our generation is one that experienced cell phones when we were kind of headed into adulthood, which meant that it wasn't introduced to the point when our brains were still developing, and we were developing the addiction that a lot of students have. So some adults take their own experience and say, they're not that big of a problem. Well, they are. They're a huge problem. And when you relate it to teaching and learning, and you look at, you know, even the basics of good teaching and learning, and like, you know, Saphir says, if you don't have their attention, you have nothing. So those things are geared to take their attention away from their teachers. So we want to try to prevent that as much as we can.
Great. Thank you.
So for me, my last one was, develop a strategy for engaging students in student behavior and disciplinary responses.
Yeah.
Love that idea.
Yes, for my school council, in fact.
I, I just think it's great, because I think, you know, when you've got your peers that are going to, you know, kind of, sorry, sit in judgment and help on how to work through a situation, I think you, sometimes you think a little bit more.
Sure.
How are you, I mean, I see that it's obviously not for completion until the end of next year, but I'm guessing you guys have had some discussions around it.
Well, so the school council brought this up, actually, this was one of the later recommendations from the council, in terms of trying to better engage our student body in conversations about the way we approach and address things as the adults in the school, and better understanding their perception of how we're doing that, how well we're doing that, what ideas should we maybe think about. Because this whole idea of addressing behaviors, like, the reason why we've all invested so much in restorative practices, is because we want students to, we don't want to just address the behavior, we don't want the behavior to continue. That's the goal of whatever it is we're trying to accomplish. So I think my school council made a great suggestion that engaging our students, and even if it's through the Student Leadership Council, in conversations of their perception of the way that we handle things and the way that we address things, would be really helpful for us as the adults in the building, and understanding what they're seeing. Yeah? Yeah, thank you.
We're good? Yes?
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any other questions regarding the school improvement plan moving forward? I don't think that there were, but I just want to double check.
Thank you.
Seeing none? Let's move on. Assistant Superintendent of Services and Equity.
Thank you, everyone. You don't...
Thank you. Yes.
You have to get up early. Feel free. You can stay if you'd like.
Have a...
Get to sleep.
Have some dinner for us, please. All righty. Ms. O'Brien, please.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to present the committee with some information on district data on safe and supportive schools. The Views of Climate and Learning, VOCAL, is an annual survey conducted by DUCY that's designed to provide schools with information on student perceptions of three dimensions of school climate: engagement, safety, and environment. There are nine areas within, with their descriptions listed below. Under engagement, there is cultural competence, which is the extent students feel adults and students value diversity, manage dynamics of differences, and avoid stereotypes. Relationships, the extent students feel there's a social connection and respect between staff, teachers, and students, and between students and their peers. And participation, the extent students feel engaged intellectually, emotionally, and behaviorally in the classroom, and the extent that students or their parents are engaged in school life. Under safety, there's emotional safety, the extent students feel, feel a bond to the school, and the extent adult students support the emotional needs of students. Physical safety, the extent that students feel physically safe within the school environment. Bullying and cyberbullying, the extent with, that students report different types of bullying behavior occurring in the school, and the extent that school staff, students try to counteract bullying. And then under environment, there's instructional environment, which is the extent that students feel the instructional environment is collaborative, relevant, challenging, and supportive of learning. The mental health environment, which is the extent that students have access to support systems that effectively support their social, emotional, and mental health well-being. And the discipline environment, which is the extent that discipline is fair, applied consistently and evenly, and is a shared responsibility among staff, teachers, and students. So grades, students in grades four, five, eight, and 10 can participate in the survey as part of the MCAS administration each year. Eighty-eight percent of Marlboro students in those grades have participated in the survey in 2022 and 2023. There's no significant, there's no significant difference in the survey results from the last two years, so only 2023 results will be presented. So under school climate overall, there's a 49% favorable or most favorable reporting from students compared to 50% at the state average. That broken down into engagement, 51 of students reported favorable or most favorable conditions, which is the same average as the state average, 51%. Under safety, 46% of students reported favorable or most favorable in that area, which is slightly below the state average of 49%. And under environment, 52% of students reported favorable or most favorable in that area, which is also the same as the state average. So overall, approximately half of the students surveyed reported positively about school climate and the three measures within school climate. Of the remaining students, 36% reported somewhat favorable, favorably compared to a 15% of students who reported least favorably to school climate conditions within the district. While Marlboro compares to the state average within survey results, there's a lot of improvement that we still need to make. We continue with our anti-race, anti-bias work, restorative practice. with our anti-race, anti-bias work, restorative practices, and social, emotional learning, instructions, and support to improve school climate so that all of our students feel welcome, physically and emotionally safe within our schools. Then also below is district end data, district end-of-year discipline data for 2022 and 2023 for year, four-year review. Data for the school, current school year will not be available until after our last data submission at the conclusion of the school year, and we'll be able to report on that data in the fall in comparison to the 2023. So under that is a table with the, with the types of offenses and then total amounts of offenses for '22 and '23. The first one, under attendance policy violation, which is not attending school or classes as required, we saw a decrease, a decrease in 2023 from 2022. Most of those offenses were skipping class. And I do want to point out, the data for 2022 is a school year that, if you recall, '21, '22 was our first year back for students, everyone back and in person. The year before that was the hybrid model. So during that school year, we still had a lot of COVID restrictions, we still had a lot of absences because of required quarantines because of positive testing. And the 2023 results, that was our first year pretty much like back to normal. There was no more COVID restrictions. We were expecting students to be in school full-time. So this year coming up at the end of it, I'm really looking forward to seeing that data for 2024 compared to 2023, so we can really be comparing apples to apples. Yes?
I was gonna say, relative, this was interesting information to review, but I think it's gonna be really helpful for us to really have much more of a fruitful conversation about it in the fall, once we would be able to compare it, because I think that was what I kind of had to keep on going back to, was not to get too hypersensitive about things until we really had a little bit more of a baseline. And I don't know how everyone else was feeling.
And before you, that, that's, I was debating whether or not to start putting a narrative after this table, but I wanted to present this information because there was a request for data to be provided publicly. So I did want to lay out the groundwork by expectations, like, here's the groundwork, this is our baseline, and then receive our data in the fall for 2024, be able to compare '23 to '24, and really start having conversations into each of these different areas.
I just have a question as well. How does the, you're, you're citing like specific offenses, like totals, but what's the class, like the total enrollment? Does, has that changed from year to year, and does that affect what the numbers would be? Like, do we, obviously, it sounds like we had less enrollment in 2022, and is that why in 2023 there's more offenses, is more students? Is there a correlation there?
I don't, so it, these are actual offenses, not percentages. So you could deduce that if there was less students, then there might be less students who are acting out or, or needing to be disciplined. That is something that, you know, we'll be able to probably compare better, the '23 versus '24. If we were seeing, there are some offenses here that we saw increases from 2022 to '23. Let me see, like one, like theft, stealing, personal, personal or other property, we, that, that increased from 18 offenses in '22 to 30, to 30. So maybe it's because we had more students, but there's other offenses that, that declined, where like school threats, it went from 13 offenses to nine. So.
It seems like a majority of them went up, which is a little concerning. That's why I was wondering if the enrollment had a factor in it. But I definitely would like to see what the 2024 data shows, too, because then I think it'd be, give us a better overview. Thank you.
This is suspensions, too, right?
I just, that's how they count them.
Not, not necessarily suspensions. This, this is, there is suspension data as well. Some of these, like skipping class, it is reporting on like the number of students skipping class. And then how many of those resulted in a discipline?
Yeah. So there is, so the example that I look at is always, and why we started talking about this was the bullying offenses. So you have 16 in '22, and 15 in '21, and '23.
Yes.
But you know there was, like, just a, a percentage of how many bullying cases that were reported and investigated.
So these, these are substantiated bullying, so.
And that there was discipline reported.
Yes. Oh.
And education is usually the first step on some of the reports.
And just, I, I know when you had mentioned that the first set of data was the, that school climate, no, 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 that, that.
VOCAL.
The VOCAL.
DESI VOCAL.
The DESI VOCAL.
Yes.
But the, the data in the second set of information, is that also pre-K through 12 data? Or is this just like the high school?
No, this is district, district-wide.
The whole district?
Yes.
It has some PK bullying.
And I just.
No, there is elementary.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's where this all started.
And I don't mean to be Negative Nelly on DESI VOCAL, but I can remember going back to my days in high school when SAT used to throw these questions, these additional questions like these on standardized tests. And I'm gonna say, their kids are just going dot, 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 dot. Because if the state average is at about 50% for everything, and so are we, guess what? That's not actual.
So how reliable is the data? But we have other survey results.
I know. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying that.
That will also be ready in the fall.
I guarantee you, if we took five other districts.
Metro West data will come out in the fall.
Right. But if we looked at five other districts right around us right now on DESI VOCAL, we'd see 50% too, for them too. Because the, the kids don't care.
You, you have to dig into it. The VOCAL is actually, I would say, when they first started, we completely ignored it. It's just something the data seems to be, the way they're asking it, or just the process, seems to be improving. And a lot of districts are using that data as, as good data, because you can dig into it if you, you know, play with it long enough and know it well. We're just getting to that point.
Right. But also, if you take away the numbers on the bottom half to pose, like their safety obviously is 46%, but if you look at the offenses, you can see why, because there's such a jump with numerous offenses. So I mean, if you see, if there's a lot more threats, then of course they're not gonna feel safe. So regardless of what they're punching, I mean, we have to look at this and say, like, this is concerning regardless of.
Yes.
No matter how many students are there, or what in 2024, like, you know, I mean, obviously, this is a tool to utilize and say, okay, where should our focus be?
Yeah, I mean.
Overall, I mean.
Mayor Christian, that's why I was saying, I'm trying, I was trying to hold back a little bit of getting too out of my skin on seeing some of the uprising on some of those numbers, because I was hopeful that if we looked at the '24 numbers, knowing what we had been, you know, from a district, working to try and, and do the restorative practice, I was hopeful, I guess, maybe I'm being Pollyanna. I was hopeful by seeing that '24, that maybe we would see a downward push. And that's, I guess, why I was like, I see it. I don't want to ignore it, but I'm trying to say, the sooner we can see that in the fall would be really helpful, because I feel like we'd have a better judge, right, to have a conversation. Because otherwise, I'm gonna be like, so let's have a lot more going on.
But, yes, but there's, there's also two different things. We have 5,000 students, all right? So the, the numbers are based out of 5,000 students. And these are offenses, are discipline issues that the administration has taken time to document, to consequence, and to go through the full, complete process, which means that they were making sure that they were on top of all of it. And that is something that we want to encourage, and we want to continue.
Absolutely. But then, but then you can also take the flip side and like, okay, then now what's not being documented?
Right. But they did a really good job of.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, but there's also, there's two sides to every, you're like, oh, okay, you know.
Do we have the same data pre-COVID?
Yes, I could, I could.
So when we get to '24 figures, can we also put in pre-COVID?
Sure.
Like, before that, just so we have something to compare to.
2018, 2019.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Any other conversations or discussions regarding Ms. O'Brien's report? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on. Public comment. Public comments. Going once. Are there any public comments?
Public comment, yeah.
What?
Is it all public comment?
Yeah, right, yeah, right. Well, public comment going twice. Are there any public comments on today's agenda? Seeing none? Last time, public comment. Is there any public comments for today's agenda? Seeing none. Moving on. Action items and reports. Policies for approval.
Mrs. Hennessy. Mrs. Hennessy. Hi, y'all.
Hi.
So, um, yeah, so as you all hopefully did see, there were three policies that somehow I'm gonna blame it on keystroke error, that I needed to send those three revisions out to you, because Catherine obviously must have had my finger hanging on to a certain key a little bit longer and miscredited, miskeyed a few, few of those. So my apologies on that. So most of these, as you will have noted, there were not content changes. There may have been like a word here or there. As a, for instance, if we said he, she, we normally would change it to a there. And that's a lot of things that we went throughout all of this. So what is your pleasure on moving forward through this? There were a few where I know Ms. Matthews, my wonderful proofreader, contacted me about a number of different spelling errors, commas, something like that. So how would you all like to move forward? I can, you know, make a motion to approve the bunch with the, you know, amended changes that were in there and the lettering?
For the sake of argument, we'll need to discuss what was changed into what policy, so we know what we're voting on.
Okay.
Would that make sense?
Will do. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy BA, which is School Committee Operational Goals. The changes.
Let's take a step back. So I'm assuming there's only a few that were changed or edited by Ms. Matthews, or no?
Yes, there's only a few.
Right. So I'd rather go through those corrections, and then we can approve them all at the same time, or no? Unless you want to go one by one. I mean.
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Stuff she did were just spelling mistakes.
No, 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 I have some other things, but I was gonna, what I was going to suggest in this is that we, we can say that all of them, and then for comment, in the comment portion after the motion, to address some of the questions at that point, or.
So like, I would make a motion to approve all of Section B, and then you all ask whatever questions within Section B?
Perfect.
If that's.
Okay.
Possible?
I think that works.
Because that way, then on individual policies, if people.
My only concern is that there was any amended items in Section B, we'd have to go over those individually. Because then you need to make a motion to amend.
Agreed. I think those are the ones that would be brought up. Exactly.
So if all of Section B is good, and there was no concerns, if anyone has any questions on Section B.
Exactly.
Then we can make that motion.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve all of those within Chapter B with the amendment as noted to, instead of BDDAH, it really would be BDA. Instead of BDDB, it should have been BDB. And instead of BDDC, it would be BDC. Sorry, that's called bad Catherine typing. So those are the amendments that I would move forward with at this point. And then if I, we could do a second, then we could have a discussion on other ones if that's.
What were then letters again? And if not, go to letters, just can you say what the actual policy is?
Yeah, the policy would be, the policy is reports of school committee.
Which will be?
BDA.
BDA.
Thank you.
Reports of school committee.
Any extra D's?
BDB, which would be quorum.
Yep.
And BDC, which is voting method.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's easier that way.
Yeah, no, the.
Just want clarification for the people.
Completely understand. It's a confusing.
Okay. So motion on the table to amend those policy letters. There's a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding?
Okay. So Policy BCC, duties of the secretary. I spoke to Ms. Hennessy today, and one, I understand that the main goal of this task is to convert in time for the website, changing the numbers to the letters. And I know you guys have been having your subcommittee meetings, and that the goal is not necessarily to change the.
Content.
Content, unless there's something that's blatantly wrong and needs to be corrected immediately. But in BCC as an example, number three says, the secretary in conjunction with the superintendent and the chair shall set the school committee agenda. Mrs. Bowden-Hinder will tell us that in her days, early days, she was part of that equation.
Correct.
That stopped for some time because of the choice that was made by the chair. So my question is that that is not our common practice right now. I'm fine with that, but I leave it to the chair and to the superintendent as to whether there would be consideration of a change to that, to a resumption of that, or, so again, I don't think it needs to be decided tonight, but I would just like.
Flag it that it needs to be.
That there needs to be a conversation, because that is not the common practice as of right now.
And you said that the goal was to, was the conversion of the.
Correct.
We have been making notes about.
Yes, and she, and Mrs. Hennessy just said that, but I just want to, I, since I don't usually come to your policy meetings, I, and since it affects me personally, I take it personally on this one. So I, I just, it caught my eye in saying, it's just not our practice, so.
And as Mr. Gary was just stating, what we've been trying to do is, my lovely little policy book here, as we've been going through, when we realized there was a policy that was going to need more content discussion, we've been making note of it so that we could then prioritize those as a list of things that we'll then need to be going back for. And that, that's on my list now. So the secretary, duties of a secretary would be one of those that we would put on that list of a hotbed of policies.
So next one on your list?
Yes.
BEB, regular meeting, meetings, meeting, I don't know, one says one thing, one says the other. Number three, the agenda will be sent to each member of the school committee and city clerk by Saturday before the regular school committee meeting. Again, that was the days when we would have somebody hand-deliver it to our house in a manila envelope. And, you know, the, the donkey would come up the street and hand over a little packet. So again, that, that was just, again, not regular practice.
About the agenda and the packet, and as well, it would be delivered on a Friday afternoon, horse case.
Electronically.
Electronically, that kind of thing.
Um, ba, 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 ba. This one, I'm just gonna say it out loud, that to me, BEEB, School Committee Discussion Directives, I kind of chuckled a little bit, because I believe it was Mayor Christian who the first day said, why do you have discussion directives when you're, there's never anything underneath. who the first day said, why do you have discussion directives when there's never anything underneath it? But it really actually has an important role that we just don't utilize. We just, it's actions to discuss what's on the agenda, or put things on the next agenda. We've just never done it, so.
So maybe we can flag that both for policy, but also for maybe our next workshop?
Right.
We can put it on to discuss how we want to.
Oh, and this one is a question for Mrs. Murphy as well. BEEE, the minutes. And it falls here, and it also falls later on as far as public records. The last paragraph says, "The approved minutes will become permanent records of the committee." And I know we've had conversations about who is the holder of the permanent record. Yes, we have the minutes. But the keep, is the city, in fact, the keeper of our records? Like, but the student records are ours, the school department?
Yeah.
But the documents and such, are they the city's? Is the city the keeper of the records?
Oh, some of the city clerk would be.
We have, we have files of them in district.
No, I know.
But who's the official?
Yeah, yeah. So again.
That's a PETA question, I think.
Yeah, so we'll, so we.
Okay.
We will have that as part of our, you know, so right now I have out of Section B, BCC, BEB. So it's BCC, which is Duties of the Secretary, BEB, which is the regular meeting, and BEEB, which is School Committee Discussions and Directives. Those would be three that we would flag out of the B group as being content.
I didn't get a turn yet.
What? Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Is now the time? Can I ask now?
Sure.
So my questions are Policy BBA, Powers and Duties. Number six, because this is something I do, to, it says, "To consider and approve payrolls scheduled for signature, all payroll warrants shall be signed by three members of the school committee other than the mayor, prior to being sent to the city treasurer's office."
You changed.
Again, that is not current practice. Underneath it, it does say, "The school committee may designate one member and an alternate member to sign payroll warrants." But I don't, I guess you need to look at number six, because it doesn't say, or I guess it does say or, but I don't know.
We could probably get rid of bullet one, like we did in seven, when we did the warrant.
Like when we changed it, I thought we did get rid of that, but I guess not.
And then another question I had, hold on, I have to scroll through all these policies. Hold on. All right. BC, Organization of the School Committee. Now, correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Number one says, "The school committee shall hold an organizational meeting on the first Monday in January."
Yes.
Isn't that after inauguration?
Yes, yes.
We do it every single. I know, we don't do it every year, though. We do it every other year.
That is accurate.
Ah, that is accurate. First Monday of an election year.
Well.
In January.
Or inauguration.
Oh, actually.
The mayor did use to.
No, that is accurate. We are supposed to have an organizational meeting, just like city council has an organizational meeting every year.
Every year.
Yeah. To discuss if there's any changes.
Changes to the committee structure, and that's, so that has happened.
Hasn't been a practice.
We just haven't really done it.
It has, it just hasn't necessarily always been on that first Monday, but there has been an organizational meeting of some sort. I'm not gonna say it happened on the first Monday all the time.
We haven't done that in many years.
Not every year.
No, that would be the mayor coming and going, you go with what you've got, you go with what you got, and there's, that was our meeting.
I understand what you're saying, but that hasn't happened. We've just kind of continued on the same committee tracks and just review it on inauguration years. We haven't.
Yeah.
Well, so that would be a thing, too.
So, and that would, that actually also ties into Policy BCD, because on number two of subcommittees, it does say at the annual organizational meeting.
So either we get back in the practice of doing it, or decide not to do it.
Well, that's what the policy's for. That's what we're voting on, right?
So it either goes on your list to review, well, it should go on your list to review either way, but. Policy sometimes reflects the practice that you do.
That's all I have.
And if the practice is out of line with policy, then you have to decide is which one trumps the other.
Right, because we don't get our packets delivered to our house anymore.
Right.
Which I understand, but that's what we're voting on, is the policy. So we need to make sure that the policy is, will be the practice.
So it needs to be reviewed, because what we're voting on is the numbering.
The change in the lettering.
That's all we're voting on tonight. And if we are identifying ones that need further scrutiny, that's what she's making her little list.
Right, then they'll, they'll review it and bring those forward.
Because we have our own little list, as Catherine says.
So why don't we just focus on the lettering, then everything else? Because again, the agenda, I would assume, is for the lettering, correct? And not for everything else that's contained.
The rest can wait. That's fine.
I would say the helpful thing is, at least for us to hear this feedback.
Sure.
Because one of the things that we've run into over the years is that it's not been a living document that everyone's really looked at very frequently. So it's helpful to have this feedback.
Of course.
So that we can get to this to make sure that we are following the policies as they should be followed.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. They also want to make sure that everyone's on the same page regarding the agenda.
Completely agree.
It wasn't under my understanding to go through every single policy change, but actually just then.
Yep.
And bring lettering.
Okay. But you're right. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Agreed.
So having said that, based upon Policy Unit B, we're only changing one, two, three things, and not the actual content, which is what we're talking about with other policy changes.
Yep, agree.
So that is motioned and seconded. Further discussion on Policy Unit B. Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries for Unit Policy B. Thank you. Moving on to C, are there any changes regarding the lettering system with the C block?
So, no, I'd like to make a motion that we would move forward with Chapter C as listed and sent to you all.
As a motion on the table and seconded. Any further discussions for the Policy C block? We are calling it. Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Policy D block. Is there any changes with that?
So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the policies in the D block, which is for fiscal management.
Okay. Motion on the table for D block, seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all for your patience with that. Moving on. Policies for first read. Looks like we're now going to the E and F block.
So thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move forward on the policies in the chapters E and F as presented here tonight. I would just say, since we're here, please know that there are a number of the policies that are in Chapter E that we know that we need to address content-wise. Specifically, there were a number of policies that had mentioned COVID-19, and our discussion has been that we're gonna need to make adaptations, because some of what is there is quite valid. Should we have potentially like another pandemic? And so we will need to address it more in a generic pandemic form, if you will, as opposed to being specific to COVID-19. So I just want to say that upfront, because there are a number of policies within that section about that. Okay?
Okay. So there's nothing else to do, except, because this is a first read, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the first read? Seeing none. Okay, we can move on. Reports of school committee subcommittees. Anyone have anything regarding that?
So for policy, just to let you all know that our next meetings to continue this review would be at the end of the month, on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. That is it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else? No updates? Okay. Members' forum. Yes?
You, I have reviewed the warrant. I know the warrant wasn't in your packet, and tomorrow you will get the warrant, and the payroll warrant, and the year-to-date report. We discovered late this afternoon that they accidentally didn't make it into the email, but I have reviewed it, and I have signed it.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing?
Oh, this is Members' forum.
Members' forum? That's where we're at.
I have two words. Superintendent's evaluation.
I'm waiting.
That's all I have to say.
We'll talk about that later. Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Risha.
Oh, yes.
Because she came tonight, first of all, and she already graduated. But it's been an absolute pleasure to have you and your voice a part of this committee. And we wish you well.
I'm gonna.
And you know where we'll be, so feel free to come back anytime, Risha.
Thank you.
We have a little something for you.
We have a little something for you.
You're going away present, and you get to take your name tag.
You can put it on your dorm room. Yeah, it is Bentley College.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for past four years, past year, it was a great experience, and I learned a lot, so thank you. Thank you.
I know that we haven't worked long together, but I enjoy your friendly banter and keeping me on my toes, and.
And your little dig at graduation was perfect.
No, but on a personal, you bring nothing but an array of sunshine, and I always enjoy seeing you here. You advocate for the students a hundred percent, and I know that no matter where you go, you will go far in life, and just keep Marlboro in the back of your mind, because hopefully you do come back and visit. I know your mom will hunt you down, and she is so beyond proud of you, as we all are. So thank you for your constant dedication and, again, making Marlboro proud. So it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
So thank you. Having said that, is there anything else? Kind words? We can go on and on about you. So I know that people are hungry, so we can, we'll send you an email. Is there anything further that anyone would like to discuss with Members' forum?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Baby Jesus. Motion to adjourn is on the table and seconded. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, because I won't let it happen. All in favor. Motion adjourned at nine forty-eight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Risha.